Okay, I'd like to call this work session to order. This is a work session of the Pecosin City Council for Monday, January 14th, and the subject is storm water issues or storm issues. And Ellen, we appreciate the information that you're going to bring to us this evening. And Randy, unless you have something else, we'll let her get right into it.
I'm pleased that we're able to have this work session. As you recall, last month, we just simply ran out of time. And Ellen helped us dispense with the most time-sensitive issue. But we have a number of additional important issues, including some general assembly legislation that we may want to support or at least take oppositions with regard to them. We'll touch on that tonight as well. Ellen?
Okay. The main goal of tonight is to get across the message that even though we've been focusing on the Chesapeake Bay program, there are a variety of stormwater permits and rules that we have to abide by and our citizens have to abide by. And currently, most of those rules are being updated. So life is going to change a lot over the next 18 months. There are also, as Randy said, several new bills in the General Assembly that are of interest, so if I can answer any questions on them, let me know. So, excuse me. Okay, in your package, you received a copy of this diagram. And I'm not going to go over it in great detail. The main point I want to make here is that the EPA has the authority to regulate pollutants in stormwater, not stormwater itself, from the Clean Water Act. And what they have done with that is they have issued a variety of nationwide rules and permits targeted at specific types of stormwater pollution. And then what they did is those rules tend to delegate authority to the state. And the state, in turn, either delegates authority to the local governments or establishes new rules that local governments have to meet. So what you see before you along the bottom row are the rules that Virginia local governments and people in Virginia have to meet. The Virginia permit for small municipal government systems is what I have referred to in past presentations as our stormwater permit. It authorizes the city, it allows them to discharge stormwater into state waters. And basically, the rules that come along with this permit involve our infrastructure, how we keep our municipal facilities. Also, the Chesapeake Bay program that's coming up, this new TMDL program, will be enforced through this permit. This permit is on a five-year cycle. The current permit ends June 30th of this year. The next permit starts July 1st of this year. The comment letter that the city sent in early January, I think it was January 3rd or 4th, addressed the draft version of this new permit. So I'm not going to go into tons of detail here. The basic concerns at this point is some of the language is very restrictive, which leads you to wonder whether or not we can really meet those requirements. The second thing that is of major concern with this is the fact that most people in the Tidewater region, and I certainly don't think that Pecosin and other localities in the Hampton Roads region were adequately credited for past bay work. Right now, the comment period's ended, and we're just going to wait and see what gets revised and what doesn't. Virginia DEQ stormwater permit for industrial activities is a state-monitored permit that is issued to industries. And in some cases, it's also issued to large municipal public works yard. Our yard is smaller than the ones that have those permits. This is a state-administered program, and all we basically have to do in the city is be aware it's out there. If somebody comes in for a new conditional use permit, we need to be able to advise them, staff has to advise them, that they need to find out whether they need to get this permit, they need to contact DEQ. If they do need to get it, they just have to let us know they have it before the conditional use permit is issued. Virginia stormwater permits for construction projects is also currently a state-administered program. However, the new state stormwater regulations are requiring that local governments take over the management of this permit program. That means that, and this permit is not to be confused with the land disturbance permits we currently issue. This is focused on stormwater. As opposed to the land disturbance permit, this permit is also going to start looking at construction activities. How do contractors wash bricks? Where do they put the porta-potties? How do they wash off the tires on their construction vehicles? Can any of that cause stormwater pollution? Right now, the general permit requirements are being written by the state. There's going to be a comment period probably early next month on that. And this is going to require more staff time in record-keeping, annual reporting, inspections, and also in just reviewing the process. Even just helping citizens or project managers fill out the application for the construction permit is going to take more staff time. The stormwater regulations are technically in effect, but we're in a grace period, so the technical requirements in the stormwater permit for construction won't go into effect or not, we don't have to make them go into effect until July 1st, 2014. So our stormwater permits, July 1st, 2013. These other requirements are July 1st, 2014. In addition to managing the construction permits, having new technical standards, we also have to develop a city-specific stormwater program. That's a new city ordinance, that's new training and certifications for staff, and that is new record-keeping. Since the regulations have new technical requirements that are more rigorous than what we're currently using, it's going to be more expensive for developers, it's going to require a lot more review times and a lot more staff oversight. All of these rules are affected by special conditions for impaired waters. In Pecosin, that's the Chesapeake Bay program, the TMDL, and also bacterial impairments on the waters. Any questions before I move on with this one? It's quite a maze of regulations. So, since there are so many different rules and everything's changing right now, it kind of helps to think about this and what's due next, in terms of what's due next. Next month, we're going to have a comment letter on the construction permit. We don't have the final version of the construction permit rules yet. We're getting close, but not there yet. What I intend to do is to provide you with a memo that says, these are the changes, this is the impact of the changes, and also a draft comment letter and ask for direction from council at that point. There will also be a council presentation on the city's stormwater program. In order to keep on track, we need by April 1st to provide a draft staffing plan for the construction permit and stormwater programs and a draft model ordinance for the state to review. Now, the key word here is draft. Basically, the state just wants to know that people are actually working on this stuff. However, what they're looking for is they want to know how much time this is going to take in staff, what certifications are needed, and how the city plans to pay for it. That's what the final staffing plan's going to require. So we will come back. Right now, staff is figuring out how much time they're spending doing the current reviews and how much more we would have to bump up the time and effort based on the new requirements and let you know. With the current level of development, I wouldn't anticipate an immediate need for more staff. Now, sometimes you get the impression when you're listening to the staff that they expect you to come back and say, you're going to hire three more people, and here's how you're going to pay for it. I would recommend that what we do, and we'll get into this more with the next presentation, is basically saying, this is what we can do with the current level of staff. When we start getting this many applications, we'll have to review and come up with a new plan at that time. The other thing that's due April 1st is the stormwater permit registration statement. If changes are made to the permit that give us credit for bay TMDL work or past bay work and some of the other changes are made, this will just be a matter of submitting a simple registration statement. If those changes aren't made, I would recommend that we also include a comment letter at that time to just once more keep the written record of our concerns going on that. Okay, and then over the next 18 months, we have to finish, we have to begin implementing the new stormwater permit. That has public education, good housekeeping requirements. We're going to have to come up with a five-year plan for the bay TMDL work, and there are certain steps that you have to do every year. We have to complete development of the city stormwater program. We have to pass the model ordinance. You have to finish the staffing plan. Staff members have to start working on the new certifications that the state is requiring. We also have to begin implementing those new stormwater regulation requirements, the technical requirements, on July 1st, 2014, and the Virginia construction permits. And then, of course, there's other TMDL work and stormwater work, drainage, flood control. That's not really a major concern of the, that's not a major emphasis of the state right now. So, following putting this together, Randy asked me to go over the stormwater bills that are currently in front of the General Assembly. We belong to VAMSA, which is the Virginia Municipal Stormwater Association. Every Thursday at noon, they have an update on what's going on in terms of stormwater bills going through the General Assembly during the General Assembly legislation. And they put out a handout, like I gave you, that kind of summarizes the bills, or like Randy gave you. Right now, there are four bills on the docket that are in consideration by various committees that affect stormwater. So, in order to go over those, the first one is called the Local Implementation of Stormwater Management Program. It's House Bill 1488. This would delay the deadline that I talked about, that July 2014 deadline, by one year. So that gives the state more time to kind of get organized and give us some good guidance, and it gives us more time to kind of develop a program. The only, those are the positives. The negative would be that places in the western part of the state that aren't really implementing stormwater quality have another year to do this as well, so we're not really improving stormwater quality as rapidly as the original plan. The second bill actually kind of originated at the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. This is House Bill 1548. This is guidance documents for municipal separate storm sewer committees. What this is, is trying to get some decent guidance out of the state for how we implement the bay program. Right now, we don't know how much credit various practices will give us. The state has a list of stormwater practices that clean up the water, and they assign certain pollutant reduction loads to those practices. Well, the EPA program may be different. We have a bunch of practices that may be more innovative that, right now, the state doesn't recognize. And we're also, if we have to prepare a five-year plan to reduce stormwater, we want to know what the state would say, these are the minimum requirements in that written plan. We don't have that guidance yet. We also want local government input in that guidance because, right now, the state's kind of operating on its own, and we can bring up some issues that maybe they don't have experience with or they may not be thinking about up in Richmond. So that's the point of that rule. The next one, which is a study to expand the application of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, basically to the western part of the state. Right now, if you're west of I-95, you don't have to meet the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act requirements. No resource protection areas, no limits on construction within 100 feet of a stream that drains, eventually drains to the bay. This is a study to consider making those western counties and cities that are in the bay watershed have to meet the requirements that we've been meeting for a number of years.
Which House bill is that?
That is House, I think it's HJ, which I guess is a, okay, Joint Resolution, 615.
Senate Bill 768.
Yes. Senate Bill 768 caught my eye because one of the things we have written over and over again in our comment letters is the fact, we don't drain to the York River, that there is no lower bay watershed. Right now, we are being forced to meet water quality requirements for the York River, which is a river to which we do not drain and for which we cannot improve water quality. But we were randomly assigned there. The only saving graces, it was there, are the James River, and the James River is more impaired than the York River. So if they have to get it wrong, at least they've given us the lesser of two evils. The Lynn Haven River does not drain to the James River either. If you look at a map, it appears to drain to the Chesapeake Bay and almost directly, at its mouth and almost directly into the York River. If you look at the state websites, the state watersheds, we're actually lumped in the same watershed as the Lynn Haven River area. The coastal parts of Lynn Haven River, Norfolk, Hampton, York County, and all of Pecosin are draining to the lower bay. This is a first step in getting someone to realize that this is, that perhaps they have the watersheds wrong. So it would-
Who's the sponsor on that?
It's a-
Wagner, okay.
Senator Wagner. It would be great if this were rewritten, or if a future bill came out that said, anybody who drains to this state watershed should be taken out of whatever river watershed they've been placed in and put in a lower bay watershed with appropriate pollution removal requirements. This doesn't say anything about where the Lynn Haven River should be placed, so I'm curious to see where they end up, if they actually take them out of the James River watershed.
And do we think that that would be an advantage or a disadvantage?
I think it would set a good precedent that you need, that the rules have to be based on reality, so.
I'm talking about from a pollutant load level.
Oh, yes.
Chesapeake Bay, would our net out, you know, outfalls have to be cleaner? Or are the rivers going to drive the lower numbers?
If you look at, I think it would be to our advantage, if you looked at dissolved oxygen levels in the bay, you'll see that the lower bay is in better shape than the rivers.
Okay.
And since our, since the, also, since this stormwater permit that's coming out takes our credit, whatever everybody's done, and averaged it over the entire York River, our credit for past work is actually being distributed upstream. If we were in a lower bay watershed, everybody in the lower bay's been doing the Bay Preservation Act. So we have a better chance of getting credit that's more appropriate for what we've done. And the dissolved oxygen rates appear to put us in a better shape. Now, what the final numbers are, obviously, is what the model spits out. And we'd have to wait and see what the model spit out.
Okay. I mean, before we start making calls up to the state and going, we want to back this and not back that, the question for, we really need to answer, is that to our advantage or not? We really need a firm answer on that, because if, let's say we're successful. I don't want to send us to tighter controls than what we would have if we stayed in the York River.
What is going on now is the pollutant loadings that were brought out, that were published in the beginning part of this, were kind of wiped aside, and a new calculation methodology came out for this permit. And as far as, we can look at what the bay has spit out for, model spit out for smaller Based on what the model has spit out for these smaller, you know, these subwatersheds, it looks like it would be to our advantage, but-
Well, it looks to me like all four of these are to our advantage, but I just wanted to make sure on the fourth one.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Whether it's to our advantage or not, it's reality. I mean, I think without clarifying where we drain, it's just a, it's make-believe, you know, as it is currently. So we at least want to-
Agree. I just don't want to, I don't want to cost our taxpayers more than the taxpayers if they had it right to start with, or that somebody else had already thought that through. That's all I'm saying is, the political answer is not always the best answer. But I need to understand before we call up there, because the delay by a year sounds good, the credit for what we've already done sounds really good, the study of west of 95, I absolutely have no disagreement with, should have been done long ago. And then, so this is the last one. I mean, before we start sending letters or emails voicing our support for these, we need to make sure that we're on the same page.
I can provide you with some preliminary pollutant loadings for the various subwatersheds. The unknown in this particular equation is once the computer modelers get a hold of this, what they're going to do. So logic would tell you that if the dissolved oxygen is better in the lower bay than it is in the York River, if the pollutant loadings that came from the preliminary runs are better than in the York River, that we should be in better shape, but-
TMDL, all of those things, phosphorus, all of those things, we need to have our eyes wide open. It sounds to me, from a layman's standpoint, that it would be that way, that the bay would actually have diluted, that the rivers would be the more point source, and that the bay would be lower, and therefore, it would make sense. I just want to make sure that we dot the i's and cross the t's and understand what we're asking for.
Okay.
And can I clarify one thing?
Yes.
It was my understanding when I read it that House Bill 1548 simply clarifies how they're going to score the points, but it doesn't necessarily give guaranteed credit for work that's been done, or does it?
Correct.
Because I think that, I think you pointed out, we do want a bill that will guarantee credit for work that's been done, but that's not on here yet. So we need a request to that.
So what was-
At this point, bills have been filed for the year.
Right.
So our likely course, if we want to support or oppose a bill, we need to do that while it's still alive.
Agreed.
If we're into the legislative session, with respect to that, to the one bill changing to Lynn Haven River, that would be in a request to amend the bill. It seems to me that, based on what you said, that of the three bills, not counting the Lynn Haven River bill, that there may be general consensus that those are worth supporting.
Get through 1548 one more time.
And I think maybe it could be amended to guarantee credit, because it's about how they're going to award credit, right?
Yes, but 1548 is about going forward. We have to prepare a five-year plan during the first year of this new stormwater permit, and we have to say, we're going to do this, this, and this to meet a five-year goal milestone. So, we need to know what the state is looking for, for the papers we turn in, you know, for the actual written plan. We also need more information on what counts, what gets credit going forward, and-
Not what gets credit going backwards?
No. This is going forward. This is about the next five years of the plan.
I think we might, could ask for an amendment to that.
We can ask, we can ask.
Perhaps?
Doubtful that'll get added, but we'll ask.
With respect to that, we can communicate with patron. That's assuming that, and I didn't check today, that these bills are still alive. Their life is quick, some of them. But if it is still alive, we can ask them, consider specific language amendments. They'll accept or they won't accept, and that's fine. My question on 1548 is, do we support the bill with, if the patron is unwilling or unable to modify their bill, do we support the original bill? Meaning, should we say, we support this, further we would ask you to consider amending the bill to clarify that this document should also have definitive guidance on credit for past work? That sort of thing.
I think so.
We're talking about action by the General Assembly. Are there some overlapping federal requirements that could either prevent that from happening if we had bills that we wanted to support, or are there additional things that are coming from the feds that are going to influence what the state has permitted to do?
Are you talking about for this House Bill 1548?
For the entire issue, that House bill specifically, but for other matters as well.
The state has national guidelines and rules, there are minimum requirements that must be met. In terms of the bay program, what's going on is, the state had to come up with a watershed implementation plan and say, this is what we're doing going forward. And if the EPA either accepted it, rejected it, or accepted it with modifications. So this is targeted at something they accepted that's supposed to be done in the first five years of our next stormwater permit.
Okay, since time is tight, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing and we're doing it by consensus. Right now, does anybody, I think we ought to send a letter, because all four of these affect us, and we all know that they're one of the big risk items on our upcoming budget. I think we should send a unified response from the city of Pecosin, saying to our senators and delegates, and to the patrons of the bill expressing support for House Bill 1488. 1548 with a caveat that we include language to cover past credit, credit for past improvements, and support for House Stormy Resolution 615 and Senate Bill 748. Everybody agree?
I have no problem with that.
768.
768, sorry.
And we wanted to amend that to, or-
I think, I think that staff will stop that one if they find out that, you know, that would be more restrictive on us and call us one by one. If you determine through your thought process in the morning, looking at the real numbers, that you're satisfied, that would be a good deal, then move forward. And I think it would be, yeah.
With respect to, not to belabor this, but 1548 is the Lynn Haven, if I remember that correctly.
No.
The guidance-
768.
768, credit's going forward.
To Lynn Haven one, you could take an approach where you waited to see if it survived crossover. Meaning, if it got out of the house of origin with one idea, it's much likely that two would work. You have to do that, I'm not trying to complicate anything.
I'd say we send our support, just because it can't hurt us. I don't see where it can hurt us. It may not survive, but at least we send Senator Wagner our support for, and he's a local guy, so we're basically saying, hey, we like what you're doing.
Right.
1548 with credit.
Right. We need all the credit we can get.
We give.
That's it. There were two court rulings last week and the week before, where the courts ruled, one was the district court that ruled against the EPA in a case that Fairfax County brought with VDOT, with the state, basically. They had tried to substitute volume of stormwater for another pollutant in an impaired stream, and the EPA ruled that they couldn't, that they couldn't regulate stormwater, the water itself or the volume of water. They could only regulate the pollutants. And there was a Supreme Court ruling that came out on January 8th that I forwarded to Wayne, or to the city attorney that was in Los Angeles County, and I'm not sure of the total effects, but that appears to bode well for more realistic future regulations. We'll just kind of have to see how that falls out, so. So a couple good court rulings doesn't mean we're out of stormwater regulation or anything at this point, but it's nice to at least have a hope that some of the future regulations will be more realistic.
Ellen, am I reading this correctly, in the House Bill 1488?
In the House Bill 1488, then when, are they saying in this first paragraph that if you relocate a natural channel, that they cannot consider the relocated channel as a man-made channel? It would be determined that that is the natural channel?
I need, that is from the state stormwater regulations. I need to read that a little closely. The regulations aren't written real well. The only new word there is the date was changed.
Right.
It appears to say that to me, but.
That's what it sounded like to me. It sounded like to me it would be better if that's true, then you don't have to do all the monitoring and all the flow characteristics and all that stuff. If they consider that, the relocated channel as the natural channel.
If you don't mind, I'm going to wait for guidance from the state. I'm also going to wait to read the thing in its entirety one more time. At some point, we're going to sit down and make a list of technical questions and go through it. If you look at the state stormwater regs, they're about that thick.
Right.
So, and there are a lot of conflicts. There's also another bill called the consolidation bill, which we haven't gotten into, that moves stormwater permitting from Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation to Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. And that, so they're moving it from one agency to another. And the bill last year, that passed, was to study that. There's a bill proposed this year to go ahead and do it. But last year's bill also included some other type of technical and bureaucratic requirements, and we have to see how everything kind of shakes out. But yes, the first time you read it, it does seem like that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, nothing else for the work session this evening, so be back on at 7:00?